Alina, I have to sign for you. You want to pass out and I'll sign for you. Next is referrals. Twenty fifty-five baseline. Is someone here for that?
Uh, I'm John Banatac. I'm the engineer.
John, have a seat. Have a seat. Just give us a brief idea of what you're doing.
Okay, are you familiar with the property? It's a, it's got a little retail by doors in the front, Russian Saint Stevens Church. And we left behind, uh, there's a behind that door plan. So there's a parking lot. And right at the edge of the parking lot, we want to put, um, uh, eighty, sixteen foot high. Storage building.
That'll be for the tenants of the plaza primarily and the owner. So these aren't for rent individually, or they will be?
Yeah, I think these people have your first.
First, you're gonna rent to them first?
Yes.
But if they don't rent, I could go rent one?
Probably.
Okay, okay. Now, are you, is he central business?
Yes, CBD, yeah.
Is he still, Bob, last fall, you're here? Is he still in central business there?
No, he's not.
Do they have sidewalks over there now, Bob? Okay, sidewalks are there. It looks like you got some trees or something off.
They did progress, so yes.
Looks like there's something here.
Yeah, that's existing landscaping.
Okay.
And these are the new.
Yep. Now, do you have enough room between your building and the property line to drive back there? Or are you sharing with this guy?
It is what it is. You know, I mean, this is how they get back there now. I don't, and I don't know how accurately that, you know, I, I superimposed a survey map. On the Google photographs, so.
Do you have a survey with you?
There's a, right here.
How much Casey? Fifteen?
So we're good enough to be able to get a vehicle back there.
Hmm, so they're driving around the north side of the building there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Are you putting it in the existing parking area?
Right on the edge of it.
I went back there, Norm. It's all parking back there now.
Okay.
Like I could turn around and everything without any.
Yeah, these graders are gonna be on that existing parking area? Are they gonna be off?
They'll be off, just off the park.
You're gonna put a new foundation?
Yeah.
Put a new foundation in there?
Yeah.
So it's all unheated?
Unheated.
Unheated, yeah.
No sewer, no water?
I mean, I don't think, you, you won't even see it from baseline at all. I mean, I literally drove down there and drove around with that.
Yeah, drainage. How are you gonna do drainage for?
Well, it's pretty much existing drainage. We'll have gutters on there and a discharge back here for like natural recharge. Whatever doesn't recharge, there's a pond. Let's not leave a pond.
South lightly.
Yeah, there's a pond back there, so if it doesn't recharge, it'll flow into the pond.
Are you okay with that, Bob? Can you make something for your?
Our, our site plans need a little more detail. I agree with what he's doing and more than likely it's going to be, but the requirements from our site plan. We need a topo. That give you at least then show you drainage. I mean, I know what it's doing. But I had to go through our area mapping and find and do and look and make it, your site plan should be concise, complete with that information. So we need a topo. Um, along with that elevation for the building to be set at. You just, there's no, you know, what's contractor? Okay. He, he needs the tools to work with, um.
Do you want the drainage plan as part of the site plan or part of the building?
I'm, I'm, you know, what, with what you proposed, I, you know, if, if this board chooses to pass tonight, there's a couple of things extra I want you to add to the plans in order to get it built.
Problem.
Uh, like I said, topo is gonna be one of them, just some spot elevation, show us where the drainage.
Put contours.
Hmm. It's a pancake. They're pretty good. Just try to get a general idea of what's going, you know?
I often notice that these plans are not sealed by the E.
Uh, I think that was an oversight, but we did submit, um, Rhonda has a copy of this stamped.
Yeah, we have one.
And, yeah.
Me too. Because it's behind the plaza, even though it's an accessory building, that you're never gonna see it. So we still need to go through the various different material.
Wall for.
Bone or different color metal on the bottom.
I struggle with it only because when Ron Wilson was in twenty ninety-five, we made him, made him go ahead and do it.
We amended down to just, you know, two different metal patterns. We took the stone. This, this group did wave the stone off.
So your, your client wouldn't have a problem doing like a band of one color of metal on the bottom.
I don't think so. This is the top. Plan right now is a black roof, green siding and white doors.
Okay.
And if you wanted a band, I don't think he would.
Yeah, like, but I mean, I don't think we need a band in the back. But maybe the.
We did that with Ron too. We only had three sides.
The three sides, yeah, fair enough.
Yeah.
So we would be looking for some, you know, just a different color of the metal.
Okay.
So if you're doing green here, right, black roof.
Yeah.
And then whatever color, beige or something on the bottom. You know, three feet or something.
Okay.
Oops, that's yours.
Yep, okay. You're gonna have electric to the ones, right?
Yes, electric to the.
How are you gonna feed that overhead or is it going underground?
I think we're planning underground. That's the talk right now.
Okay, then poles obviously on baseline.
Hmm, or probably coming out of the plaza.
Okay.
Um, you don't note any lighting on the site?
Uh, we do talk about the lighting. There's a the last paragraph in the blurb at bottom.
He's got dark sky lighting will be added.
And really, I mean, we really should kind of notate. That's, I was gonna say, a little, a little more, a little more detail.
Well, I think the, the, the building permit drawings will have all the details, because we don't have detailed building drawings yet even. So, you know, like, I couldn't tell you the foundation or.
Well, actually, what your architect gave one about.
We had, that's kind of a generic one when you.
You need to have a light above each door.
Well, we, at least on the corners for lighting the lot more.
I think, I think electrical codes can probably require a light over every door.
Oh, okay.
And then maybe if you're saying like here and here possibly.
Yeah.
So you need a little more.
Yeah, that'll.
Follow code anyway.
The building permit drawings I thought would be where that would show up. Okay. Let's just go extra straight.
I can not label it, it'd be something you talk about.
Pardon?
I can not label it, it's something you talk about here.
Yeah, yeah, you started, you wrote on the drawings that it's wall packs on the building corners to light the park, so. That's for this board to discuss.
Wall packs on the new building?
It's what, it's like you said, there's a couple sentences there at the bottom of the drawing page.
Right.
Yep. You want a larger window?
Okay.
I apologize now. Do you see it's gonna be underground? Where are you gonna feed it inside the building? It's gonna go inside the building? It's gonna be on the extra electrical feed?
Up beyond the permit drawing, on the electrical permit drawing.
Well, one thing, if you're gonna feed it on the extra, you're gonna need.
Yeah, you're gonna be, I, I don't know where the services and, and the, but I'm sure he's gonna be coming out up here.
Yep.
And then just stretch it to wherever they're gonna want it and, uh.
All those air conditioners were up on the wall. So they're not on the ground back there.
Okay.
I would assume they would come pop out a corner and go underground. You know, come out here and go like that, be how I would do it. You don't have to do it over here and then have to try, you know, drive everybody over or over here. In that fifteen foot piece, we just.
I would think we're gonna go.
Dig in the mud and bury it.
Cause this, you know, the, if, if you're ever is gonna do anything with the rest of the property, it would be, this would be the access.
Right.
So I imagine the underground construction will be over here.
Okay. I mean, they could put wall packs on the building too, the, the existing building. Well, we, we just gotta make sure that whatever you do for lighting, it doesn't. I, I mean, we're just gonna spill over the side of this guy's building and there's nothing here.
No, yeah, it'll be directed down just to light up this area. Anybody else have any other?
Are you gonna have lighting on the interior of these garages?
I'm pardon?
Lighting on the interior of the garages?
Yes. Electrical inside, but no, no heat or no heat, no water.
Right. No heat, no, no water, no sewer. But electrical.
You're gonna meter each garage separately?
I don't know.
I have a question. Um, just curious on the secret short form of the habitat page. It says wetland, it has an X, it says urban suburban. Is that X intended to be in the wetland file? Cause there, are there wetlands there that you're currently or planning to be working through any kind of regulatory review for? Okay, was this, was this intended to reflect something other than what land I can interpret? What that meant? Cause I, I know that New York states are never. It's changed the regulation and that is.
There should be two boxes here, one for the wetland, one for urban suburban.
Okay.
I think that's what, uh, uh, you, urban suburban is setting.
Okay, okay.
I think the form should have another box here for if it was a wetland.
So that's what happened. Yeah, cause I was just curious, cause the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation changed their state wetland regulations in January of this year. And that's one of the new types of wetlands that can be regulated by the state. So I, that's, that's why I'm. That's what prompted the question.
How did they change it?
Um, they add a lot, they added a lot of, uh, new special criteria, not the maps.
The maps are no longer, rats, right?
On the maps anymore, but they've added like sixteen new criteria by which the state can take jurisdiction over wetlands. And urban suburban wetland is in one of the categories. So. And, but I went by there. It, I mean, to me, you mentioned the pond, but it just looks like, you know, upland grass, yeah.
I didn't see cattails or.
Right.
Marshy or.
Yeah, I didn't, I wasn't suspicious either, but I just wanted to clarify on that nature.
Interesting, not saying to the projects. But through action. So.
Okay, so we have.
Under, it's under four thou, it's under four thousand square feet. So it's actually a type two action exempt from secret.
Oh, so you didn't need to fill that?
Well, we, we requested to be filled in, so we.
We need to have.
Okay.
With that, plus you two, you just said you're gonna have your grain fall back to the pond.
Well, it'll, it'll not necessarily go back to the pond. I think we were gonna just.
It says you're gonna hook up for the storm grains.
To establish conveying systems, which is the field.
Well, it looks like here, you do have a catch basin you could grab too.
Catch basin gotta go somewhere.
Is that, yeah. I, I think the plan was to just run it back here. You don't probably have a little depression for it to recharge. And if it doesn't recharge, it would just go into the pond. Do we need something for you about for stormwater?
Um. Alright, project size is under an acre, so it stays under any of the thresholds with big projects is. Like I said, I, you know, I need topo, I need elevation of the building, drainage patterns identified. I don't think it's not, as he said, it's small increase and we don't have any, we're not aware of any drainage issues in that area. Um, it's likely gonna weep, weep its way to that pond.
Yep.
There's other aerial photos that show each of those places. There's a fairly extensive bunch of swales and stuff that's been dug around through there over the years that moves that water over to that pond. Um, I think his drawings should have, because of stormwater, at least some kind of, um, erosion and sedimentation control on it for the, for the contractor, whether it's, you know, steel fence or the coiled log, you know, coconut log. Perimeter to protect what's during construction runoff. Um, maybe a couple more dimensions too, when the plan sucks. But like I said, it, it, it's size and where it's located and what it's doing. It's kind of a cleaner on any of the regulations.
We'll put the, uh, we'll include that on the, on the permit drawings, sort of building permit.
Okay, so on it sooner. Yep, is everybody good or any other questions?
Do you wanna?
I was gonna say, Alina, you got.
Table this and wait for the information, come back to us and look at it again? Or do you wanna just put provisions?
Well, I think, I think we were just talking about the different colors.
Well, yeah.
The more clarification on the electrical, which could go through building. And then we gotta put some type of language to cover engineering.
Topos.
You know, topo and drainage and erosion, sewage control, or, you know, just satisfy the engineering part. Which we've done in the past.
What are we looking for, for the bottom of the building? Like just a different color?
Just the different.
Let's go to ARB experience.
Uh, I don't think so.
Well, then you guys are the ones.
We will send it to our.
Oh, you will?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because it's accessory.
Oh, okay. So I thought it was commercial then.
It's supposed to match the.
Oh, I think that building.
Existing buildings.
Existing buildings, a block building, I think so. Yeah, it's a block building, so it's a little.
Brick on the front, isn't it?
Uh, it's, it might be. I, I didn't really look at the front real close, but I believe the building was all blocked, so it's.
First, I've never seen you spend your money on range.
Yeah, I don't think that we need to have a block building.
Yeah.
It's a storage building.
Yeah.
That would be the most different storage building.
Does anybody wanna make a motion or you want me to do it?
Alright, I'll make the motion to approve. With, um, condition of more detail on the lighting and on the building and the parking. And we would need, um, to satisfy the engineering department for their requirements.
On the parking, what, where, what are you looking for the, for the, your lighting on the parking?
Oh, the lighting in the parking. Is that okay? Bob, you don't need me to spell out every little thing.
I think you took notes of what I was saying.
Yeah, he's been writing over here.
I, um, in the different color.
He's got topo, Bobby, erosion control.
Sediment control.
And, uh, we need, um.
Building elevator, alright, so I'm looking, I just, just, I'll go quick down my list here. So it's topo. Oh, I, we need, drawing should have at least an elevation for finished floor for the building to be set at.
Okay.
Um. As I said, identify some form of a drainage pattern once you do the topo. Erosion, sedimentation control measure for construction. Um, and probably a little more dimensions, what you've got there. You got just like one or two. There's no.
Right.
You got a two off, you got one off of each side. That's it. You know, some kind of dimensions back from existing. Where is he gonna put this thing? What's, you know? Give him the, give him the roadmap.
Okay, we're gonna start the building from the existing.
And wait electrical through them.
Uh, yeah, that's, that's
Yeah.
Not engineering, but yeah, those guys gotta make sure of all of that.
And then on the exterior. Our lean, we want, uh, a, a different color metal band on the bottom of, on three sides, not the back.
Okay, do you have something submitted for?
You'll have to with building.
For the, yeah, as long as they're happy with the way.
Yeah, cause it's gonna go, they're gonna push it to architectural review, so they're gonna wanna know your colors.
Great.
Anybody else got anything else they have? Covered everything?
What's your timetable on this? Just curious.
You're sure? I think.
Second by anyone?
Second.
Second by Dave. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye, aye, aye.
We're all settled. Thanks for coming in. Thanks very much for your time.
Thank you.
Improv. Hopefully didn't chop too bad. Well, Kurt Kenny was, but he's out of town, so that's a good answer, probably some of the more technical.
That's okay.
So I think as soon as you can set rain stuff.
No.
So we can, or be at least, and they got them.
I'm gonna send, you got the plan that we have now, I'm gonna send. Okay, they're, what they're doing, they're not gonna scrutinize it that hard, so. Bubble start thirty day clock this week.
Yeah.
It's, they, next board, next town board meeting, they can approve. They gotta wait for the thirty days for the kind of reform.
You're gonna be stuck reading architecture.
But, yeah, I mean, obviously get yourself squares with building in order to start, but, you know. We gotta, we got a little bit of time. We've gotta answer.
Okay, also, so get, get the.
I was giving you. Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna use your existing plan and I'm gonna use your existing C R form to submit it to the county, because I'm just gonna keep things moving, start the thirty day clock. Um, it's not usual. They'll have substantive questions or concerns with what you're proposing. So, you know, I don't anticipate anything out of that, whether that's, uh, we'll get that timeframe done, so the town board can act that it's an opportunity. But we are all.
Okay, actually, communications, one and two is, I'm gonna say, it's received and filed. Number three.
Yeah.
Okay, this was the maintenance law that we made the motion. They sent us a copy of.
Yeah, I think we just asked for a copy of it.
Right, so what I had done, cause I had a conversation with the town attorney about the whole procedure, we got skipped and the whole ten yards there. Final thing of our conversation was.
Could you, well, sorry.
Yeah.
Final thing of our conversation was if we wanted as a board, that we could go back through the law, write our recommendations and send them to, to the town board. Then if they felt they would wanna change the law, they could do it at that point. So my question to the board is, is do we wanna do that or just let it go?
Well, I think there's some, some mistakes in here. One says twenty-four days. I think it should be twenty-four hours. Clearing of ice and, no?
I, I'm not a hundred percent positive, but I believe that when they do this and they're gonna send you a bill that did not re administrative costs of the town added to that bill. So if this law gets exercised, whoever they're exercising against is gonna cost the town money to, to do this.
Yeah, it doesn't cover that.
That doesn't seem to make sense to me. You should have to pay all the fees.
And also the other one, uh, uh, parking shall be cleared within five days from the date of mailing. If you mail something nowadays, you may not get it for four days after it's mailed.
Yeah, or a week.
Yes, so I don't think that's appropriate.
I'm gonna fall back to supervisor.
So, Dave, I don't disagree with what you're saying. However, I wouldn't wanna put a, uh, a, a nominal fee or penalty in a law, I would rather that something be deserved for the uh, fee schedule, just about every year. That way you don't have to go change the law for changing.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
That's understandable.
Yeah, so I, I would just recommend that's done over here.
Right.
And this, this regards to that.
That makes sense, but I still feel that whatever the fee schedule says, it should cover the whole bill. It shouldn't cost the town any money.
Right now, it kinda looks like if you don't mow your grass, they're gonna mow for you and send you a bill. But you don't know what any of that looks like. Might be a good deal.
Right.
Yeah.
It might, it might end up costing some money.
I might sell my law more like you guys do.
Right, but I, I, I agree.
Well, it, it seems like we've made all these suggestions before. We've sent them to the town. They've seen them and they've ignored them. I don't know why we're gonna do this again.
No, we didn't do this. Remember, we never did this one, Dave. Remember, this was the one that was highlighted. We tabled it. And we, we never made a recommendation.
Remember, we.
Discussion. Remember it came in in May.
Yes.
We tabled it because of the highlighter. We didn't, not, couldn't figure out what was going on. Then we didn't meet in June. So we didn't have a meeting. Then July, we met again. And there was, no, Garcia wasn't here. We sent out a letter to Garcia to come to the August meeting. In the meantime, he pushed it through the attorney and the town board to get a vote from the town board. So when he came in August, when we were here,
Right.
Pretty much.
We never really went through.
We never really went through this at all.
We discussed the procedure of how, where and where, where and how it went, but, uh, this board never really looked through the law.
We did a lot of like yakking, uh, what he called fear mongering. Um, I mean.
We didn't have it.
And we didn't give him anything constructive, like, I mean, we don't seem to be really doing that here. We seem like we are always saying, hey, you missed this, you missed that, you missed that. We're not here to say, oh, gee, did a great job.
That's the recommendation. I would.
I, I, is everybody good with that? That we can put this on referral for next meeting? Do I need to go through the town board for a referral or no?
Yeah, you never theoretically moved on, it's still on your agenda.
Okay.
You guys can make recommendations to us.
Anything, any law changes you want.
Right.
So is everybody good to do this for next meeting?
Next meeting, yeah.
Yeah, I have, yeah, well, everything. Yeah, I wanted to talk to everybody first. I didn't wanna just push it through and say, hey, we're doing this without everybody.
I think that's fair.
Do we wanna take a vote to make a motion to put this back on our agenda?
I'll make a motion to put the local law number one of twenty twenty-five on our agenda for the next, or review it this court.
Okay.
I'll second.
Andy will second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Okay, this is next meeting. Alright, so that's now report on the town plan.
There wasn't one.
Wasn't one, meeting was canceled. And I'm sure Long Road is still unfinished, or Bob's, oh yeah, there's Bob's over there.
No, town board was given another update. Consultants went through it. There's some still decision of complete incomplete, still working through logistics.
Okay.
That's on therapy.
Party continues.
Okay.
Sherman, oh. Regarding training.
I'm gonna get it right, one sec.
Regarding training. I took a training course with the New York, um, Planning Federation in August. I sent in for a certificate and they said, no, you can't do that, cause you're not a member.
Really?
There is one?
There is one. The dues aren't paid.
Right, that's why we haven't got the magazines either.
The last time it was paid was January of twenty twenty-four. I talked to the, uh, to Corinne this, today, and she said she sent out an email to, uh, town board and other officials wanting to know if anybody got the, um, uh, the invoice. And if they did, give it to her so she can pay it. So today she tells me, she says, your board members must have got it, got the invoice. I said, no, they, they don't get that invoice. It's always gone directly to the town hall. And so she wants a contact to, uh, so that she can get an invoice to pay it. But right now we are not part of the federation.
But we haven't been at all this year.
All this year.
Right.
Which is, yeah, which is like, we're not getting the magazine.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I never put two and two together.
Me neither.
What did you, what, what, what did you train?
Um, the, uh, the duties of the, uh, the clerks.
Okay.
It's very interesting. Um, but yeah, they sent me an email back and just said, uh, no, can't do that.
We, we pair a bill, they'll give you a certificate.
Yeah.
The invoice is in this building someplace.
Well.
Or it never made it. I mean.
Didn't you, that's true, too, Jim?
Yeah, I've been getting certificates, but nothing within the last four or five months, so. Yeah, I feel like.
It's due in January every year.
Is it something that we could take next meeting, like what you learned from that and what Jen did and, and you two guys do a small?
Well, I think the problem is you get directed that we become a member.
It's gotta be certified by training.
Okay, yeah.
Um. Somebody's gonna make contact with the New York Planning Federation.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, somebody's gotta be put on the point to make it happen.
You have that information?
No, I. I get, I get those emails that I forward to you.
Which are meaningless for us at, at this point.
Right.
Yeah.
And, uh, I tried going on the website once to see if I could get any more information and they wanted a a password, which of course I don't have. I just get the emails.
Okay. So what do we wanna try to do for our training next, next month? We gotta try to.
We only had one hour this year.
Yeah, I know. That's what I'm saying.
How many you need? Four?
Four.
Yeah.
What are you guys in the mood for?
Would, can Casey do something?
Get the attorneys on this, do it, and take your pack, we can get.
Would you guys wanna have Casey give us something from building?
Yeah.
Did you have questions for the building department?
Did you use last year?
Well, we had.
Uh, the sewer, no.
Justin, yeah.
The water guy?
Oh, that's right, yeah.
Okay, and that was it.
Uh, we didn't get our training done last year because all kinda got dropped.
Yeah, so I've been trying to take these four of those classes, cause I kinda thought that was our hours, so I don't mind taking, I mean, I've learned a lot.
They're good.
I know, it's gonna be tough, but those aren't recognized training, right? When you would, just, just starting to be coming in talking water is not, we're not a certified training program.
No, but that's how we've been doing this for years. So are we, we need to change it up?
I'll tell you what, you got a couple of new members. You should probably just stop a couple of modules.
The old, the old base law.
You know, and, and these are certified, let's get, launching, work on two of those and then we'll work on two other things.
Okay, Tom, would you have any time to try to look into training for us?
Oh, yeah, right.
Yeah, we can just get this. Either God, they do, I think.
Okay.
So when there's somebody there, that's all, I don't, you have to. I'll talk.
Okay.
So, uh, Tom, Kristen Sabar's got a thing through her engineering firm, where they talk about, uh, uh, stormwater and.
Process and that kind of stuff.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's a certified one, that would really be a good one. It would probably be a good one to give to.
Would you be able to reach out to her, Tom? Okay, so we got that call. Okay, so next meeting, whatever's on the agenda and regardless, we will meet to do this. This shoveling, grass cutting program.
Well, I think.
One with training.
Plus some training too.
Yeah. Well, why don't we do a module?
Do a module?
This one.
Any particular?
No, you pick. That's why we do the first one?
Yeah.
With our, whatever you want.
With this new laws, that's mean we can get a hold of right aid to get him to cut down the tree that's pell over?
Well, I don't know, does this new cutting, uh, isn't that more on that, isn't there a law on trees that fall that, wasn't that done years ago? Okay.
That'd be in the fall under the, um, property, company name, say, out there.
Yeah, wasn't there some on huge road where the tree was falling on the other guy's house?
Created a, 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 injured a.
Right.
Well, a parent.
Okay.
So that was like kind of a.
Yeah.
Was, that was a real outlier move to do. Yeah, it wasn't just a cut plan there.
How about maybe Aldi's would be interested in right age building?
They're not.
Too far off the highway?
They, they want, the only reason Aldi's looked at the island was that location that per, we tried to get them like anchor tenant for River Town, any stuff, you know, come into the middle, be here for us. And, and it is not for the island. They, they literally said the drive-by traffic is their driving factor of. And so.
I agree.
That location, that site, that accessibility, or they wouldn't even be there.
Drive by and through way or the.
That's because of the ramp right there.
But how are they gonna recognize that there's an Alby there?
They have a.
Get to that rent.
They find a variance for their sign.
Once, once it, once it's there and known, it's, it's accessibility.
Okay.
So if you're coming on, you're coming onto the island, you're gonna pass some.
Off the bridge, you're gonna see it.
The busiest piece, through way, the busiest crossroad, the busiest piece of Boulevard, right back there. They said if something happens to, tell it all terrorists, they'd be interested in that. But since they're, that's, that's got a good traffic thing too.
Yeah, so is all these gonna happen?
Still working on.
Dave.
So they said in their fifteen years, uh, putting up, uh, stores all around the country, this is the worst piece of property there's ever dealt with. And so, well, at least we're number one, you know, like you see, we're winning somewhere. But they are still working on it, it's still gonna be.
Again, Dave, I think that falls back to like what we're, what Norm was saying. You got a bad guy. Rules don't apply.
Yeah.
Well. Motion to dismiss anyone?
Dave, you wanna introduce Kristen?
Yeah.
Oh, Kristen's gonna be our new secretary. Arlene is abandoning an.
Quitter, are we? Just a quitter, right?
Kristen, would you like to tell them a little bit about what you do?
Sure.
Um, I currently work at Niagara County Supreme Court, John Lemon Volney Court, all day. So, you know, I'm not gonna be afraid of any of you guys, guys coming texting me in cops all day long. Um, previously to that, I was, uh, Grand Island Town Clerk. So I used to do the meeting minutes for the town board. I was hoping that that, you know, helps. And I also have five kids and four grandkids.
Are you a stenographer at the clerk, at the court? I'm sorry?
No, but I did take stenography and, uh, and I got all the way up to one ninety-five, but I needed two twenty-five and some family stuff happened and.
That's okay.
And I didn't do that, but.
Yeah, okay.
No, no, I worked for the chief clerk.
We, we talk slow.
As long as I can get us to talk one at a time, then we're, that's better.
Yeah, that's, that doesn't bother me, but I'm not gonna be able to talk slow, so.
That's okay.
I, when I raised on the island, my, uh, my grandfather was actually the judge here at town hall. Um, many years ago, he was a judge when it was a voting.
Well, I mean.
Holly.
Oh, yeah.
No, yeah, he was actually a, a voting member of town board and a judge.
Well, welcome aboard and we're glad to have you. Thank you. Arlene, we're gonna miss you, Arlene.
You want, Chris, okay, go.
How many years has it been again? I started with the zoning board in nineteen seventy-three. Then, then the woman that was doing planning said, I really wanna retire. How would you like the planning board? So a few months later, I took, took the planning board also. Then when they started the architectural board, they asked me to do that board, so I did that for a while. So when I started full-time in the assessor's office, I gave up the, um, zoning and, uh, architectural board. But I kept the planning board for God only knows why.
Cause this guy?
No. Was, uh, Mr. Harrison was, uh, uh, chairman at the time, way before all your time.
You've played too many chairs.
Yeah, and Miller was chairman.
And Frank Stirling.
Yes.
That's, that's, that's recent, that's recent.
Yeah, and Triang.
Yes, last question before we adjourn, does, uh, is everybody staying on for next year? If, does anybody wanna leave for any reason or?
Is anybody's term expiring?
Cause I don't know what the terms are. Arlene's got the list of terms, but does everyone still wanna stay on here?
Let's be kicked off.
Okay, okay, well, that, uh, Rhonda's sending me an email, want to know if we have any empty seats or anything.
We're gonna do another mass advertising, make sure we cover all the boards looking for people. And whoever needs to be reappointed, we're gonna make sure we get all of that on our New York meeting.
But we're full at this point.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And if somebody was out of, you know, out of, out of term and wanted to, uh, you know, go on vacation with Arlene. You know, we understand.
Okay.
Well, good luck, Arlene.
Yeah.
Well, thank you.
You've done a good job.
Yeah, thank you, Arlene.
I'll miss it.
We were glad to have.
I can do on Monday night, second Monday of the month.
Watch Jeopardy.
It's gonna be like Johnny Carson.
We're gonna see the sea zombie and invited on.
Well, you're still on the.
We make a motion to adjourn?
So, yeah, I like that.
To adjourn?
You know, my sense.
Oh.